We're gonna go ahead and start this meeting. We're gonna ask Reverend David Murray, we give us our prayer, and we're gonna ask Councilor McCrone to give us our pledge, if you all would stand.
Let us look to the Lord. Gracious God, our Father, Lord, we come first to say thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, you've been so good to us, you've been so kind. Lord, you opened doors for us that were closed. Lord, you made a way out of no way, and we stopped to say thank you. And then, Lord, we want to let you know that we need you. We need you right now. Our city, our mayor, our council, every household in this city, Lord, we asking you to work a work in us today, Lord. Touch now in the name of Jesus. Lord, we ask you to continue to let the work of our hands be for your glory and your sake.
Yes, Lord.
And we give you all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise, Lord. Thank you for this mayor, this mayor with a vision. Lord, continue to protect and cover him. Continue to let this council, let us come together in unity. And even when we disagree, Lord, let us find peace. We know you can, and we believe that you will, Lord. We say thank you for that. And now, Lord, we ask you to cover and keep our first responders, those who are protecting us, those who are keeping us safe. Lord, we pray and ask you to keep them in the name of Jesus. We love you, Lord, we praise you, and we thank you for that, all that you are, all that you've done, all that you are doing, and all that you're going to do. Thank you now, in the name of Jesus, we pray and ask it all. Amen. Thank God.
Amen. Let's face the flag for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to call this meeting to order. The City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor McLendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Souda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Bruce. Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Mary.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
I heard from Dr. Bruce, he's actually taking his father to the hospital, to the doctors performing today, so that's why he's not here. At this time, I want to call a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on behalf of the public here? For the bond.
This is a public hearing for the issuance of Public Utility System Revenue Bonds Series 2024, authorizing a trust indenture in securing the bonds, and authorizing the sale of the bonds, and the execution of the bond purchase agreement. Anybody here for the purpose of the public hearing for that?
Here now, we're gonna move on. We had the public here. We'll move down to bid openings, West Memphis Convention and Business Bureau, and the removal of the Christmas Bid Declaration 2024.
Make a motion, refer those back to administration for disposition.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Were there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion approved, it's submitted.
So moved.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved. We had no whole business. Ms. Mohammed?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we read R.101 and 02 by title only.
May I get a second?
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? City Attorney?
R.1 is a resolution certifying the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting a nuisance within the city of West Memphis' corporate limits.
Hearing that read, but I think we need to make an amendment for 2804 stop grow.
Yes, our staff had made a request that we remove that from this while they worked with the property owner to try to get the property back on standard.
Okay. So I get a motion, that's the motion, I get a second.
Second.
Are we discussing yet?
That's the amendment.
Just the amendment.
Oh, for the amendment, I'm sorry.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? It is amended now, discussion? Ms. Mohammed?
Yes, sir. I know we've had some complaints in the past about people's homes being torn down, and they said they knew absolutely nothing about their homes being on the demolition list. And what I would like to ask for public information as well, has anyone come forward other than the one that Councilman Katz spoke of to speak of their houses being torn, not being torn down?
Not currently.
And we do send certified letters?
Yeah, we have, we have the process that we first started before it come to council. We send letters out to the address that the, that they have, and Marion turned the address that they have, and we get them time to respond, and then after then, we bring them before council, and then once you all approve, if you still don't do nothing after 30 days, even though this is a resolution on, on ordinance.
Right, right. I just wanted to ask that question because there have been complaints about people saying they did not know that the city had approved to tear their homes down, so just wanted to put that out there.
Mayor, I was gonna, I was going to ask a similar question that Councilman Mohammed asked. Do we have anybody in the here that could get up and explain that process? Because I'm asking, because I've had houses turned in that's been like two or three years, and they haven't been on the list, but I do have a house on this list in my ward now.
Well, definitely, I'm gonna call one of them in right now, but just because you put them on the list, they have to be deemed dilapidated.
I understand.
So if they don't meet that, because we just don't like how it look, but the structure ain't got strong bones, the structure is good, it's just not gonna be torn down.
Well, one, one in particular, it's on the corner of West Cooper and Rhodes. It has a apartment attached to the back of it, and I see now they're trying to rent out that apartment, but that apartment is attached to the house that was supposed to be demoed. So I just didn't, I don't know what's going on with that house. They tried to, tried to rezone it at one time, but we voted that down, so.
Well, we definitely don't want to turn up that they got someone that's living in it, because it could be dangerous.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It, it, it's on the demo list, but on the, like I said, attached to the back of the house is a apartment.
Well, that's, that's new to me that I bring it to, I'm trying to contact you right now.
Okay.
Bring to your attention.
Can you come into the council and explain yourself?
Here you come, here, here on his way now.
Okay.
And you say it's a apartment connected to a house?
Yeah, it's a, it's a two-story home sitting on the corner, most of us know about it, that lives in Ward 3, and it was put on the demo list, and they got the letters and all this stuff, the ownership did, but then they, it was try, they tried to rezone it.
Who, I mean, but rezoner only gonna come to you all?
Well, I know, but it, we did, well, I saw rezoning sign in front of it, which I didn't know was gonna be rezoned, but then we voted that down, and the house is still sitting there, and I noticed this recently, it's got a separate living unit, but it's attached to the back of that two-story home. I don't know.
Okay, we'll find out in a few seconds.
I think a lot of that is dictated by the, is the house free and clear, does that lean against it as to how staff goes through that process?
Have we done that, or you say we're gonna have to do it? Ms. Katz?
They will, before they demo anything, they'll always do a title search, make sure the legal owners, if there's any liens out there. If there's a lien on the property, they will normally, and Ms. Bowman can answer this, try to contact the lien holder.
Right.
Because they may want to come in and say, fine, instead of demo, we'll just go ahead and foreclose on it and take it over.
Right.
Do the rehab, remarket, so.
And what I was asking was, had that been done? I, I understand that process, and I was trying to understand from both of you all, has that been done or not?
The last time I explored what was going on, I was told by Plaguehead Development that letters have been sent out, and that's been a year ago.
Staff would have to answer that question, I do not know, I know the property you're speaking of.
I'm just, I'm just curious as to why it's not making the list, that's all.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, the fire department used it one time for a training session, and went in and just pretty much abolished the whole inside.
I thought it was on the list, and that's how it came up in conversation, and for some reason, it has not moved from there.
That's what I'm saying.
So.
Well, we now have Mr. Bowman, will you come on up? Mr. Crum, Mr. Crum, can you, Councilor McCrone, can you refer on this?
Mr. Bowman, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm just, I was just asking a question about a home that has not made the demo list, but I understand that the, the process to get it on the demo list has already occurred, and during that process, and the property was, was, had a rezoning sign in front of it, which we voted down.
Uh huh.
Okay? And I can give you the name, the number of the apartment, and the last time I checked, everything was done, all the letters were sent out and everything like that, but that's been a year ago.
Okay. Well, well, it could be an issue where that person came in, I'm not certain, but we could check into it. A lot of times, we have property owners that come into the office and say that they're gonna renovate or rehab the property, and we'll take it off the list and talk with them and see if they have a plan, arrangement of how they're gonna renovate the property. It could be that, but if so, we'll put it back on the list for demolition, and make sure that we follow the process for it to be demolished.
Well, it really probably is doing the, if they want it refurbished, the fire department used it for a training exercise, and tore, pretty tore the inside up.
Yeah.
Pretty good, and cleaned busted out windows now. The other question I had was, there's a separate unit on the north side of that property, that passes Rhodes, and I saw a sign up from a realtor the other day that it was for lease or rent, and I was trying to figure out how, it's, it's, it's got a little attachment to the residence that we deemed to put on the demo.
Demolishing.
So I, I just was trying to figure out why it hasn't made the demo list, and I can get with you later if you would like.
Yeah, we'll look into it, we'll see what the issues are and why it's still on the list. As far as the part that's an attachment that's being leased, we'll probably have to look at that and, and see what's going on.
Yeah.
But if it's on the list, and it's inhabitable, uninhabitable, then we'll definitely look at demolishing it, and it's something that the mayor and I have been discussing too. I'll be bringing to council a set of standards for determining what makes a property in such poor condition that we have to demolish it, because to the public is really unclear. There are a lot of people who have their houses boarded up, but the eaves are exposed, or the siding is damaged and gaping holes into the attic, or the roof has a hole in it. Anytime a home is exposed to the elements, it, it, it spits, what's the word I'm trying to use? It speeds up the deterioration.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, people don't realize, like, if you don't put a roof on it, board it up, close up the eaves, make sure that the elements are getting into the inside of the home, it's, it's not really refurbishable. So we have to come up with a set of standards, and I found some that determines whether or not we should tear it down, because really, it's subjective, and it's up to our building inspectors to determine if a house is inhabitable or not.
Well, the other, the other property I, I put on, I asked to put on the list, it was on West Danner. Now, I did drive by there today, and it has a sign on the front of it in red and white that says vacate.
Yes.
Is that meaning?
We're gonna demolish it.
Okay.
Yeah, we use that sign, we post that sign to let them know to vacate the property, or typically, we only really demolish homes that are vacant. There are situations where people are living in homes that need to be demolished, but you really can't remove them from their home without an option, so.
I understand.
We only mainly demolish vacant.
Well, that's when actually the whole roof fell in on it.
Oh, yeah, it's time for it to come down.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Mr. Bowman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Once this is approved, can you explain or re-explain to the public how the notification process works, the posting of the property, the certified letters?
Yes, yes. So basically, what we do is, when we initially see a house that needs to be demolished, we send them a letter explaining that we're gonna demolish it, we post the property to vacate. Once we do that, we put it on the list for city council to come through the, of course, the legislative process to demolish it. Once city council approves, we take the resolution, we put up another sign and vacate, and send them a letter with the resolution stating that we're gonna tear down the house. At any point realistically, even though we don't have it written in ordinance, they can stop it if they come in and give us a plan of how they're gonna remediate the house. But I've been thinking through this a lot, I'm gonna wind up writing another ordinance that deals with how they can stop it, the time period they have to rectify it and provide a solution, so we don't run into this issue. We've had homeowners come to us last year saying they were gonna fix their houses, we tried to work with them, they didn't do anything, and then the houses are still standing this year, so we have to call them back in and say, you didn't even follow your own plan, the house is still in the same condition as it was last year, and it's continually causing the neighborhood around it to depreciate.
Right.
So we're gonna move forward tearing it down, but that's why we also need a set of standards saying, you know, if more than 20% of the house is exposed to the elements, or the windows been broken out for more than a year, or you haven't had utilities for more than five years, it's time for us to really consider moving forward, taking this property down, so we can put something that's more valuable there.
Well, I know that your, your staff, especially Marilyn Felix, has done a really good job of trying to keep up with all this stuff.
Yes, and in some cases, we have people who voluntarily wants us to demolish it, so.
I have a question. If homeowners living in a house, and utilities been off, like you said, five years, and they still living there, and what do we have to do to try to get them out, or get them to do whatever they need to do to get the utilities back?
To some degree, we ran into a situation like that in the mobile home park we're working in. There was a gentleman living in a mobile home. It had power, but he didn't have a front door, windows were broken out, it was a lot of clutter. He probably had running water, but the house was so unlivable, Ms. Marilyn and I reached out, particularly Ms. Marilyn, reached out to an agency that could check on the welfare of that gentleman, because he was a senior, and we think he was a veteran as well, and they did a welfare check, and wound up, I think, taking this guy and helping him to get the help that he needed to be able to live properly. So we have to really make contact and build relationships with these social organizations that can help individuals living in these conditions. Before, like, you know, we consider, we can't really go to them and say, we're gonna tear down your house, they don't have anywhere to go. And so a person living without utilities, that's like being homeless quintessentially.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I hate to do it again, but I'm gonna tag on to what Councilor Monday was saying, there were, we had a home in our neighborhood that had nothing but just water, and some, I don't know if you wouldn't call them squatters, but some squatters moved into it, and they didn't have electricity, just water.
Yeah.
And I was, I've heard two different things about that.
Well, one, one of the code issues is that you can't have a vacant house just open, and that, that could lead us to cause us to demolish your house too. A house that's vacant should be boarded up for that very reason that you're speaking about, so that vagrants and homeless people won't come and live in, in those conditions and put themselves at risk. So usually, we could send a letter out, just like trash, debris, or grass liens, and say, you know, if you own this property, you need to have it boarded up and, and secure. If you don't, it's gonna deteriorate, or we're gonna cite you, or eventually, we're gonna ask to demolish the property.
So if, if, if they've got water, that does not mean that.
Well, I mean.
They can continue to live there.
I mean, in some cases, you, you have people that really own the property, and they live in those conditions.
Yeah.
I hate to say it, but you have people who live in those conditions, and we have to find a way to help them and get them in better houses. So as you know, we're working on developing affordable housing, even with the clearance of the mobile home park, we partnered with W. M. H., the West Memphis Housing Authority, and, and they've housed several other people that were living over there, so we, we really just need to get more aggressive about making sure people have safe, decent housing.
Well, I, I know, and I appreciate what we're doing that way, but I've seen all kinds of stuff. I saw one apartment building over in my area was vacated, and people, I don't know how they did this, they ran, a person that was living there ran a wire from the transformer all the way through his window, took it up to a generator.
Yeah.
Now, he got evicted, but that's some, I mean, you know, I, I, I think we need to do whatever we can to solve some of these issues.
We can.
With this homeless and all this.
We, we really need something to address safe and affordable housing, because we have, we've had a lot of complaints about tenants living in terrible conditions, and these multifamily developments and stuff, so we, we really need to find ways to address that, and we are working on it, and on a case-by-case basis, but hopefully, in the next year, we'll come out with something larger and more inclusive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the job you're doing also.
Thank you.
Your department, your entire department. Thank you, well, thank you.
So I did want to address one thing. From the utility side, we are actively working on some of these tampering issues and things that you're talking about. So one of the policies that we've just updated, if a house is vacant for over a year, it's nearly impossible to maintain the locks on the meters, right? So most of our residents know how to turn a meter back on, turn the water service back on, so if a house has been vacant for over a year, we have a policy now that we will go out and remove the meter and cap the service line. So that way, they can't turn the water back on, so most instances like that, they probably weren't paying for that water. I don't know what house it was, but it's just an assumption.
That's great.
And, and things like, we're also, we have a big problem with tampering, especially at apartment complexes, what, what you're talking about, and one of the issues is, is that, that it's a, it's a central meter for the apartment, and so we're, we've upgraded our policy to where we're enforcing that tampering policy on the manager of the apartment.
Yeah, good.
They're the ones that pay that bill, so that we can eliminate some of those tampering issues and, and people living in some of those types of conditions. So we're actively working on that too. We've been working with code enforcement on some of these other things, some examples of where we have residents that are, they're discharging raw sewer, we've talked about this, like, raw sewer into the public right of way, and, and so we're working with code enforcement where they will send a letter to the violator, they will give them a certain period of time to correct the problem, if they don't correct the problem, so that we don't continue to create a public safety issue, we will shut the water off, so that they can, can't continue to discharge sewer, because it's a public safety, public health issue. So we, we've, we've changed all those things just in the last month and a half.
Do, do you still keep records on unpaid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and if a, if a, if, so if a customer comes in and they wanna reopen an account, if they have an unpaid balance, they have to pay that balance in full before they can open up an account and start service again. So, yes.
Because I know at one time, it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, so the billing office has done a very good job of really getting our, what we call uncollectible counts under control, and when we get our new customer information and billing system in, that will get even better.
Great.
So, yeah, so we're actively working on all of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, City Clerk, your pass, will you give the resolution or number?
Resolution number 2302, 2302.
That number is 2302. O2.
O2 is an ordinance to authorize aldermen and members of the city council to purchase electrical tools and equipment from Bob Atkins for the West Memphis Utilities, or from the West Memphis Utilities and for other purposes.
I'll place on the second, will anybody get a motion in the second?
Place it on the second reading.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose?
Second reading of an ordinance to authorize aldermen and members of the city council to purchase electrical tools and equipment from Bob Atkins for the West Memphis Utilities and for other purposes.
Motion to suspend the rules, and read it on the third time.
Can I get a second?
That was an echo, yeah.
It's O1, yeah, oh, yeah, O1. Can I get a second?
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
This is third reading of an ordinance to authorize aldermen and members of the city council to purchase electrical tools and equipment from Bob Atkins for the West Memphis Utilities and for other purposes.
It been read first, third, the final time, can I get a motion in the second to approve?
So moved.
In discussion.
I would just like, of course, I'm, I'm not fighting against you or anything like that. I'm not fighting against you or anything like that, but my question is this, is this through a company or through you?
Directly, or through a company through you?
My personal assets now, so I used to own a business.
Okay.
Okay, these are all new tools and equipment that I have when we close the business down. They're things that the utility purchases now, and so it's just, I'm selling them at a discount to the utility, so that's really what it is.
Is this the whole hall of, of everything that you own? Is this everything?
It's, it's everything on the, on the back of the ordinance.
No, I saw, I looked at that.
I keep getting the resolution, it's everything that's on that ordinance, so it's.
Well, if we're getting it at a discount.
I'm so sorry.
If we're getting it at a discount price, I think that's wonderful.
Correct, yes. It's, 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 it's a win for, I, I get it out of my garage, and the, the city gets it at a discount, so.
So when we do, when we do the purchase order, how would that be done, just to?
I was just gonna say, Bob, I think Brett Sims valued this as well, right?
He did.
It wasn't just your valuation.
Brett Sims, I didn't want to have any part of the valuation or any part of it, I wanted to be very transparent, so he inspected everything, valued it, and, and approved everything.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
I'm good.
Were there any other discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All the pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, passes. Will you give that ordinance a number?
Ordinance number 2680, 2680.
Now, Councilor McCrone?
Mm-hmm.
You didn't have no discussion, I know.
No, I'm gonna tell you, no.
Everything come up, I know that.
I'm gonna tell you one, because I'd already had a previous discussion with Bob Atkins about it when I saw it.
I, I don't let that go. What's good for the goose is good for the gander, we don't let that go.
That's a good deal.
Let that go.
That was a good deal.
Thank you. Ms. Mohammed, will you make that motion starting again on this?
I think we've already got it the first time.
First time, then on the next one.
All right, this is O2, this is the first reading of O2. An ordinance authorizing issuance of Public Utility System Revenue Bonds Series 2024, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds, and the execution of a bond purchase agreement prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Mohammed to make the motion again. Do I need to do the motion again on the second reading first, then?
By title, by title only first.
Okay, title only first.
I'd like to make a motion that we further suspend the rules and read O2 by title only.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose?
And let's go ahead and do a separate motion, put it on the second reading.
Can I get a motion in second, the place is on the second reading?
Second, first.
Second.
What did he say? I said, I said.
We got, we got.
Motion.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, this is second reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Public All right, this is second reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of public utility system revenue bond, series twenty-twenty-four, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds and the execution of a bond purchase agreement prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
We're hearing it for the second time. Now, Ms. Mohammed, title only?
I'd like to make a motion that reads, suspend the rules and read oh-two once again by title only.
Make it a second?
Second.
All the paper, I?
Aye.
Oppose?
Let's put it on its third reading.
Can I get a motion second to put it on the third reading?
Make a motion.
Second.
All the paper, I?
Aye.
Oppose?
This is the third reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of, I'm sorry, of public utility system revenue bond, series twenty-twenty-four, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds and the execution of a bond purchase agreement prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
Hearing it red for the third time, can I get a motion the second to approve?
So.
In discussion.
I think you need to, if Mr. Atkins doesn't mind, I, I think he should stand up and, and try to explain what this is all about for the public to understand. And I'm glad you filled in the blanks, uh, for the dollar values on this thing, so.
So, so this, this bond issue is to complete the repairs to the wastewater treatment plant, the upgrade and the repairs to the wastewater treatment plant, as well as to finish the renovation of the, the wastewater system in the city of West Memphis. Um, as, as you know, the city is under a consent order with the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, due in large part to unauthorized discharges into the Mississippi River. When we have a significant rain event, the wastewater treatment plant is overrun by water and we don't have any choice but to discharge that untreated water. So, as a res- so, at, to resolve that consent order, we entered into a corrective action plan with the state. And one of the tenets of that plan was to upgrade the, the wastewater treatment plant. So, we're doubling the capacity of that plant. There was a bond issue in twenty-twenty-one in, because it took an extended period of time to correct our corrective act, to approve our corrective action plan, COVID, supply chain issues, we had price increases and inflation, we had significant price increases. So, when we budgeted the first time, our cost estimates were about fifteen million dollars lower than what they should have been. And so, this second bond issue is to make up the difference in those cost increases so that we can complete the, the upgrade and, and fulfill our corrective action plan.
What's this based, when will the work begin?
I'm, I'm.
So, when, if we pass this, and when we get the stump to bonds, when will the actual work?
So, the work actually began, um, about a year and a half ago. So, the, the wastewater treatment plant is, is already, so the first bond issues, we began construction on it. We're about forty percent complete, we're six months ahead of schedule, and about one-point-five million dollars under budget on it. So, we've made some, so we've realized some cost savings through, the weather has helped us quite a bit. So, we haven't had to de-water any of our construction facilities. So, when we put the clarifiers in, we had to dig holes that were forty foot deep. And you know where the plant is in proximity to the Mississippi. So, because we're in kind of a drought, we were able to save some money there. We've done some value engineering, we were able to save some more money. So, the, we're, we're on target to be completed by the first of twenty-twenty-six.
All right, pin it on everything, uh, once it link the time, this will be complete. Just told you. Everything passing, once it link the time, will you have this complete?
At, at the beginning of twenty-twenty-six.
Bob, do you want to tell them why we got to ask for this more money? Or, no, I want, I want, I want to ask them a question. Y'all got, y'all got.
Well, well, I, I, I won't put you on the spot.
Sure.
Okay. When we, we did that first bond issue, we raised the water rates to help pay for that bond issue.
Correct.
Do you foresee us having to raise utility rates?
So, so.
I mean, it doesn't matter, it's got to be done, but.
Correct. So, that, that's one of the challenges with this, right? So, this is, this is, uh, if we don't complete the project, we will experience significant fines from the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality as well as the EPA. So, we don't have a lot of options as far as completing the project. It's never our intention to raise rates. Um, I've, I've had this discussion with several council members. We always look at our rates and the whole purpose of our rates, the utility is a nonprofit, okay? And the whole purpose of our rates is to cover our expenses, the expenses to deliver that service to the cities of West Memphis. We have no intention right now to raise rates above where they're at. But we will consistently look at, do we have enough revenue? Are we generating enough revenue to pay our expenses? We don't want to not pay our bills. So, there's always that possibility that could come up, but the intention right now is to not raise rates.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Anybody else?
I, I submitted a, a sheet. I was just gonna, after the meeting, maybe get on email or conference and just give you a call. So, it's just some of the technical aspects for me to learn, not so much questions I have issues with, so.
So, if you have time after the meeting, so we have experts right here that we can answer some of those questions for sure.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Hearing no more discussion, uh, all the paper, I?
Aye.
Oppose? Can I get a motion the second to approve session fourteen, the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, I?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes as well. Will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Ordinance number twenty-six eighty, two-six-eight-zero.
Two-six-eight.
No, no.
We already do two-sixty-two. And then two-six, and then two-six-eight-three?
Yeah.
Eight-one.
Two-six-eight-one.
Okay.
Ordinance number two-six-eight-one.
That number is two-six-eight-one. All right, we're moving down to permission request. Uh, I'm gonna ask you all to, uh, table, uh, permission to replant the fifth edition of Richland into, uh, the city attorney can get an ordinance and give everyone a copy of the plant.
Make a motion to table?
Are we tabling to the next meeting or indefinitely?
Until he gets.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Second.
All the paper, I?
Aye.
Oppose? It's tabled to the next meeting. Uh, the next thing is permission for the police department to purchase tasers.
Is this already in their, the budget for this?
That, that, that's one thing I, I, I want to make clear. When the commissions have a meeting with their, their bodies, and I, I don't know what happened, but I think the police department asked for this. And, and if they needed, we got to give it to them, but they went off the commission saying, go ahead and do it. And that shouldn't, that shouldn't do. It should come before this full body. And they ain't getting more me to get with the, uh, finance director because we in the, the community side saying, well, you over spending money and we don't know what we spending, but they getting it from the council, yes, 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 they're just being. And no one to be able to say, well, hey, you only got five dollars and you trying to spend seven dollars. So, this, this us just getting the same pay before me saying, we, you all, hearing the y'all commission meeting, then before y'all get this council. Then y'all make that motion and y'all gonna go, yeah.
Now, staff with the department was specifically told, and I made the contact with Ms. Perry to review their financial standing on this issue and some others. So, you know, they know not to purchase without a clearance from the finance director, already even consider it, so.
But it's my understanding that from the commission, commissions, it should be referred back to full council body for this position. Is that correct?
It was for the finance director first to see if funds remain available before it could go to the next step, yes, which would have been here.
So, right now, what we got to do is go ahead and tell them, yes, they can get them.
That's up to Ms. Perry. She says the funds are not available, then it will not be approved.
The, the funds are available. We, we have additional, uh, contingency that we always put in capital purchases for stuff like this. But this is gonna be a continu- continued budget item for the next five years. Their, their tasers, um, have to be leased now. They cannot just purchase them like they have in the past. And so, this will be in the capital purchases for the next five years.
And the reason why I'm bringing it to our attention, because something else was thrown in there and I had to cut that out because I don't think you all.
Oh, they've made requests for a, a lot of things.
Yeah.
Um, between automatic weapons, uh, bulletproof vests, uh, several things. So, but again, they know they have to go through that process of getting approval before they even think about issuing a PO to order something.
All right, uh, so, can I get a motion the second to approve this? We do have any, any capital spending. Can I get a second?
Second.
All the paper, I?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Committee reports, uh, the budget?
Yes, we're budget met. Uh, Ms. Perry gave everybody an update on the bond payments for Tilden Rogers. Those funds are already being set aside. The discussion of the park and shelter, uh, new shelter, hopefully, will have some groundbreaking. Uh, parks will go out for bid, hopefully, very, very soon. Uh, went over the July numbers. We discussed the go-live date, which is projected to be mid-November. Uh, several requests, uh, FOI request that Ms. Perry is working on, uh, bank statements, some budgetary items. The request to the council will probably come up, I'm assuming, maybe in two weeks for the AR, AP funds. Originally, the council had set those funds aside for the park down at, or the industrial park at one-forty-seven and Broadway. Now, with some water issues with Southland and Hopefield, they may be asking to move those funds from the, that site to a different site. Uh, but utility is working on that process and will let us know which way they want to go.
Question, well, I mean, not a question, statement. Um, so that is, um, Mr. Atkins, can you, can you explain a little bit more about the ARB funds that you all want to repurpose?
Yeah. So, one, one, so the ARB funds were allocated for the mega site to take water, to take utilities up to the mega site. It's an undeveloped parcel of land. And my position would be to not do that. And, and the reason for that is, is whoever develops that property, they will be financially responsible for the capital contributions to, to, to provide service to that location. So, if the city were to allocate funds to that right now, all we would be doing would be providing an incentive to whoever develops that property. Right? So, I would say that we, I would advocate that we use those funds for an improvement to the utility system or something in the city already. So, the project that we would like to allocate the funds to, so there's currently, there's pressure issues for, at South Casino. It's really the northeast side of town in the Hopefield subdivision up on Mount City Road. It's bad enough up there, I think chief, there's, there's some fire folks in here. It's bad enough up there right now that the fire department, the pressure is bad enough, the fire department had to change their, their policy and process because there's not enough pressure, they don't feel comfortable that they would be able to adequately fire a fire. So, they have to now initiate the city of Marion to bring special equipment over to fight a fire if they have a call in the Hopefield subdivision. So, one of the things that we're doing to alleviate that problem is we're going to extend a twelve-inch main. So, most of our water system is looped, so it feeds from two directions, but that area up there only feeds up Mount City Road. And it's an eight-inch main on Mount City Road. So, we're going to extend a twelve-inch main across, if, if we can allocate these funds to do this, we're gonna extend a twelve-inch main from Seventh Street across Southland Boulevard to tie into Mount City, which will increase pressure in that whole area up there. It'll buy us about eight to ten years before we have to put a new water tank in that area up there. So, it, it is a really smart allocation of those funds that can save us a significant expenditure over the next ten years. It will improve public safety, so the fire department will have adequate pressure to be able to fight fires. It will improve the quality of life for the residents in that area and it, and a significant business in Southland Casino. They have plans to ex- to expand and there's a lot of expansion that's currently planned in that whole corridor up there. So, this will help with that future expansion as well.
Do you know when you'll have the cost estimates ready?
We're gonna be doing it in-house, so I, the engineering is done. I don't have it with me, but I can get, it's just the pipe costs and the existing labor costs of the utility. So, there won't be any additional, it's not gonna be a contracted thing, there won't be any additional, um, cost expenditures over than what our labor budget is already. But I can get you that cost estimate as soon as, since we have.
Before the end of the year.
Oh, yeah.
We have to disclose where these funds are being spent. And if it's only gonna be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars there, council needs to either leave the remaining balance with the mega site or they can reallocate it somewhere else.
Correct.
But we just have to make sure we get the information, Ms. Perry, and time to file reports.
I will absolutely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
It sounds like this would have been a better usage of the pro- of the, uh, grant that we got. But, but I just, I didn't know if there was any interest in the mega site yet. Is there any interest out there?
There have been some interest in the mega site, but right now, with some of the prospects, if they was to come out there, I agree with Bob and Ward, they need to be the one providing this infrastructure for us.
So, so one of the challenges is, is, is if we already provide infrastructure, but it's not enough for the development, there, it, there's a little bit of a gray area there and sometimes we're gonna be financially responsible for upgrading that to be able to serve them, right? So, it's better for, especially a parcel that size and some of the, the infrastructure that they're gonna need if we don't actually have facilities there because their capital contributions would cover the cost for that.
Well, it would be very advanta- advantageous for us to do your, your request.
I think it would be a much smarter allocation of those funds.
A portion of those funds, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
A portion of those funds.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, any other questions concerning the, the funds? Okay. Uh, the federal expenditure audit report for twenty-twenty-one has been completed and turned in. If it's not been filed with the clerk's office, we'll get it filed. Okay. And we had discussion about the bonuses for twenty-twenty-four. And we need to have a call meeting with the council members as a whole so we can sit down and go through that process, get the information to Ms. Perry if it's something council is going to do in plenty of time. I do agree with our discussion and, uh, I understand, uh, Councilman Mohammed's, uh, interest. But, but we do need to put some structure, uh, to this bonus system. Well, that's what the group will get together and discuss.
And I'm asking, when we do that, that the council do give me an opportunity because this, to hear what I have to say because I'm going to be honest with you. I love all my city family members and that's what I call them, but some of them do more than others. And, you know, I just don't think it's fair that you give a one person a five percent raise who's working day and night doing everything they can, and you have one person, you have to beg them and find them and do half of the work they're getting paid to do already. So, I think it needs to be a level in, in how we do that, or how we go by doing this. And then, like I said, I always believe that a raise is always important because a bonus is pretty much one time. A raise continue, they can see their salary instead of going up. So, before you all make this, and just, I ask you just to consider and hear me out on this.
No, we definitely look forward to your presentation, uh, for sure, and anyone else that's, that's on this council, on this, in this administration. The, and I want to make sure I understand this, the million dollars to relocate utilities in the proposed roundabout? Did I write that down correctly? Apparently, I heard something maybe I didn't need to hear.
You, you heard correct.
Okay. Um, the proposed roundabout over there at Missouri and the Service Road, uh, the utilities will need to be relocated and I'm sure state's gonna say it's on RDOT.
So, so that, I'm getting a lot of face time with you guys today, so. So, the project that Councilman Kat is referring to, so RDOT is doing a project, so they're changing some roundabouts at Seventh Street, Missouri. I think there's a total of five of them. Um, and, and it, and we have to relocate utilities, um, in order for them to do that. They're gonna do a flyover and, and, and some different stuff. How, how the process works is if, if we secure, uh, the right of way originally, then they have to reimburse us to relocate those utilities. If we are located in the state right of way, then, then we do it at our own cost. Well, the state just assumed that we were in their right of way and we, so my team's been out there and they're locating it and we're, there's a large portion of this project that is in our own secured right of way. And then, we, we're not in the state's right of way and they're gonna have to reimburse us for that. The million-dollar estimate was, uh, more than double what our cost estimates for that price was and some of the numbers were significantly inflated. So, we rejected that bid to, to do the work and we're gonna, we're revisiting it. We're gonna try to do some of that work in-house, um, and then we'll contract out the remaining work that we don't, that we can't do in-house. So, it's gonna be significantly lower than that. And the majority of the work, it's probably more than half that we will, we anticipate to get reimbursed from the state for.
So, do you think that would be part of this dilemma about the two million dollars that's been, been committed to the water line and you're wanting to do, to water line to the mega site? So, you got about, you're probably gonna have a balance of funds there. Is this gonna be started before the end of the year?
Yeah, we have, we have a, a timeline with the state that we have to move this. We, we should have it completed by the end of the year. But I don't anticipate allocating any of those funds to do the project. Is, the, it will just be, we'll use, uh, dollars secured by rates to do these, to, to do the project, the portion of the project that we're gonna do.
Okay. Now, there were. There was a line item within the budget that was approved, it was in the engineering department, it was lower $5 million. Previous budgets, if it was, say, an 80, 20, 70, 30, whatever, we would budget our share. But with the way the ordinance wants things done now, we budget the entire amount and then you have a revenue stream for reimbursement. It still ends up being 80, 20, 70, 30, whatever the case may be, but of that lower $5 million, $3,120,000 was for the South Loop project and $2,410,000 was for the Rich Road Bridge. Now, if there are funds left over from those others, and I don't know if it's possible, but that $535,000 to relocate utilities on Rich Road Bridge could be a part of that, it would be, instead of being paid directly from the city, so.
That's special events, right? The special events that we've been FOI on for the five, the special events been one.
Well, exactly, I, yeah, I had a lot of questions on that.
Okay. That concludes the report unless you have any more questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
How soon are we looking to do the discussion for the bonus between 2024?
Well, the mayor will make a presentation, at least get us a copy of it, give you a couple of days, review it. We'll meet right after that, so hopefully one day next week, if not, it'll be the week after. But we don't want to wait until November.
That's about it.
That's the last thing we need to do.
Okay.
It will be in September.
Okay.
That concludes your report.
All right, we're going to move to public works.
Public Works is, Public Works, the committee made a 9-3-2024. The agenda was called to order, old business done, old business there were nine, new business there are nine. Fort's fleet report, it says front-end loaders, four operational, no down. Rear-end loaders, two operational, none are down. One-armed bandits, three, none are down. Grapple trucks, four, operational, none are down. Public Works Director's report, recycled total of 10,000 pounds. Tires, 500 pounds, 500 tire, tires. Garbage trash dump, 22,000 tons. Cars we purchased, none, cars stolen, replaced with police report were eight. And the apartments of the car were two. And that was the end of our meeting. Thank you.
Well, we do have one issue about the, the pickup in the dumpsters. We got the four, six, and eight, but there are, some of the businesses want 10. And they do have two on the lot, but we got to do a pricing for them.
If the Public Works Committee want to get together and then come up with a proposed, uh, cost and then bring it back to the, to the next council, I mean, you all can vote if you all agree.
We passed an ordinance last year with the rate increase for two, four, six, and eight, but I don't think we went to 10.
Oh, yeah.
So we can get that old ordinance out and look at what needs to be modified.
We came up with a price.
It's under a thousand.
All right. Were there any other committees? Okay, I'm going to go to city attorney.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I had mentioned this in pre-council, but the mayor and I and Chief Police, Chief Campbell and others met with the municipal league lawyers last week. And one of the things that they had asked us to do and recommended was on one particular case that we have, which is actually a case against the police department for excessive force. They wanted us to, they wanted the council to approve the municipal league filing a, what's called an offer of judgment. And that would be an amount of $20,000. An offer of judgment means that if the other party, the plaintiff, doesn't get more than $20,000, then it would cut off the attorney's fees at the point that we made the offer of judgment. On a civil rights case, which is what most police cases are that involve excessive force, all the plaintiff has to do is prove $1 of damage and then their lawyers can get all, all their attorney's fees that are approved by the court. This would, if in fact, uh, it goes to trial or if it settles for any reason for less than $20,000, it would cut the attorney's fees off at the point we make the offer of judgment. I've looked into it a little bit more. We can also amend the offer of judgment later on if some information comes to light that we want to change. We don't expect the other side to accept the offer of judgment. They have a, a lot bigger belief about their case than we do. And so the municipal league is recommending this. This is a 90% of whatever would be paid would be paid by the municipal league. Where only for this offer of judgment of $20,000, our share is $2,000. So typically when we have situations where they have such a large percentage of the skin in the game, is what I call it, I like to take their advice and I usually like to take it anyway. But in this particular case, I think it's a good thing to do. And so I would ask the council to have a motion to approve the municipal league filing an offer of judgment in this particular case.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Some moves.
Second.
All of her, Bob?
Aye.
Opposed? It's accepted. All right. I'm going to move down to our appointments. We had one of, well, we had three gentlemen that's on the agenda for consideration. But we're going to have two positions. You have Mr. Orlando Rosado, Eddie West, and Bill Morris. And I'm going to turn up to the council and see what you all think, or in the discussion first.
We, I mean, the, the candidates for this are very, very qualified. Two of these live in West Memphis. And I know that that's not part of the requirements because all they have to actually do is live in the state. But I could make a, I could make a recommendation if you wanted me to, or I can leave it open to the, some other.
Well, city attorney just informed me we need to make them one at a time.
Okay.
So I guess we start.
We'll start, we'll start the way I received them.
Okay, Orlando Rosado?
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Rosado to the Airport Commission.
Is there any discussion by Mr. Rosado?
He's got all, he's got great requirements.
All right. Hearing none, all of her, Bob? Opposed? Mr. Rosado is appointed to the Airport Commission, second.
If I may ask that we appoint Eddie West to the Airport Commission.
I can second.
Yeah, you can second.
Because I'm on the, the committee, so.
Yeah, we got a motion in a second to appoint, uh, Mr. Eddie West, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of her, Bob?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Eddie West is appointed. It's no use to go on to Mr. Morris, I'm sure he's a qualified candidate, but we only had two slides for the Airport. All right. I had no presentation, but I do have a few announcements, do anyone on the council?
Matt, Matt, something.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask Ms. Tori, how much money, did I make a motion the other time to give Delta Arts $1,000? I never made that motion.
Can I get a motion in a second to add our chair today's, uh, Delta Art, I'm sorry, our chair today's agenda?
Some moves.
Second.
All of her, Bob?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Mohammed?
I'd like to make a motion to give $1,000 of my charitable contribution to Delta Arts.
All right, are there any other council people that want to make a contribution at this time? We're hearing none, can I get a motion in a second to approve Ms. Mohammed's request?
Second.
All of her, Bob?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. All right. Uh, I want to give my updates and I think this has been very crucial. And like I say, once again, in my efforts always to be transparent to let everyone know what's going on. Regardless, they say they do or they don't, they knew if they come to council, they would hear what's going on. First of all, I'm glad that our bids for the Rich Road Bridge, once again, is not, not the city of West Memphis. And I know Councilman Crowe, me and you have really took a licking on it, I think I took more than you, but I understand it. But Rich Road Bridge, the state, the RDOT said that we had to pull a permit for a bridge in our own city. But we got our, we done the application for our permit and Ward just inboxed me and let me know they submit because their gas line was on it, they just turned in their permit. So right now, I'm hoping that's the last thing that we would need before we go to bid. And city attorney, you want to add something to that?
Only thing I could add is that I've sent the last contract off with any changes that we had, which were very minor over a month ago. And so there's nothing else for me to do. And I think we're, contractually, we should be in good shape.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
All right.
Since we went through this history of this bridge, do you think now that we can set up a protocol for the next bridge we go through?
Well, well, I really can say because with RDOT, the biggest problem of the Rich Road Bridge completion has been where it has taken hope in associates, the architect, the engineering firm who done it, it took them two years to design it. Now, do we think that we possibly could use Pickering or someone like that or who could have came and done it quicker? Possibly so, but working with the state on this, we had to go through, I, I went through, well, some bad choices.
I'll agree we should have went through the state because it was 80, 20, so.
Because I have learned that sometime always using this, this state fund, the federal fund, is not always the best way to go because then we have to meet other guidelines that we normally wouldn't have to meet if it was something that we was doing. So using that money, then, you know, we've had to, to meet the qualifications and the guidelines that the, the federal government set forth. But hopefully this is the last hurdle, man, city attorney knocking on wood. Hopefully that this is the last thing if we can go ahead and get that bridge taken care of. Are there any more questions about that? Also, um, I, I received, I talked with you just yesterday, was it yesterday? On the issue about the Clement, the Clement Road. The, this is an issue right there on the covert that's going across where the walking trail starts that goes to Taylor Rogers. Actually, I gather Ward is where the Gabor Odell, and they're going to start the construction of fixing that little piece where the, the road there sinking. They're going to fix the cover, race the street and Patrick, so that's known that a day is not going to close anything down. So it should be taken care of tomorrow by the end of the day, it should be taken care of.
It will definitely be appreciated.
Well, yeah, definitely, we want to make sure that we always stay on anything, you know, like, like these bridges, there's something that been going on, been going on. And then when we come into office, then it, it falls on us like it's up before. So right now, anything like that, I like, if any citizen may know anything, let us know so we can try to get a, get a hit of it and not have to go through anything like we did with, uh, the Rich Road Bridge. Also, tomorrow at 4 o'clock, I'm so happy and I'm inviting all of you all down to High Tower Park. We'll be doing the grand, the, the grand opener of High Tower Park. And definitely we'd like all the council members, all the citizens, everyone that's here that can be a part of that. It's at 4 o'clock tomorrow evening. So I know that, uh, we all want to see this happen and it, it's coming and we moving forward. So at 4 o'clock tomorrow, how you bale some whistle something? Because we'll be opening and unveiling High Tower Park and they doing a lot of great things. They pushing it to the wall, but we getting it done. The museum of West Memphis, the West Memphis Museum, abatement will end, will complete tomorrow. All the abatement and different things within the old courthouse, it should be completed tomorrow. So we moving forward there. As well as Main Street, also wanted to me to announce that on some of the dilapidated buildings, we had a contractor came in to place the wall over the windows. And many of you all have seen the new signs, different things like that. We got one more one that we got to get replaced, but the, the sign is, is already on its way. So it's just one of the things of making Broadway look more presentable and better. As well as we getting ready to do, uh, do Main Street, a power, power and pressure washing of the buildings of the natural brick to make sure that the brick and the sidewalks are clean. So you walking down the street, you on a clean street. And we hoping that, that people of West Memphis help to keep us clean by not doing different things out on Broadway. But, you know, we, we asking, but that's one of the things that we are doing. And once this building is complete, every other building that's in the Main Street, this street will be where it needs to be at. Now, I mean, is it the best looking building? No, no, it's not, but it's like the, um, as many buildings has been worked on and we hoping to get it up. And it was another building right there on Seventh Street, right there by the gas station. We were looking, trying to take ownership of it today and it moved off the list today at the auction. But hopefully whoever got the building is going to make sure that they able to repair it and get it where it need to be at so that all of Broadway will be presentable whether you're on the east or the western end of the city. Yesterday I had an opportunity and I had, I was able to meet with some young guys, um, that owns their own podcast called Granny's crib. I know that may sound a little different, but what they do, they reach out to the people of the community, but most, most importantly, speak out to a lot of the young people. And I was honored to be able to do their podcast yesterday and talk about a lot of the issues. Not so much the issue, just helping people to understand or informing the people about what's going on in the city, some of the other questions that they may have. Some were good questions, they were good, very informative. Some were just, you know, we got those brutal individuals, they just won't be here, they are, but that's fine. Well, I was, I was happy that we was able to, uh, to, uh, just spread that information and let them know what the city is doing and what we looking forward to and one of those individuals here right now, Jim.
Will you stand up?
With Granny's crib, he's one of the owners and the host of Granny's crib, so definitely he's a good avenue to try to get, uh, information out to our young people. Also, I suppose they had been somewhere on the 17th and I actually missed him because I had so much stuff going on. But I had met, well, actually we related, but some other young men, they want to help with reading in our community, to get young people back into reading, you know? I know some, most people want to shoot ball, play football, play pickleball or tennis or all that. But these young people want to get back in reading and literacy is something really big in our city. And they have created something and I was honored, they have created their own comic books, right here. And I was amazed because when you look at the back of it. I, I love to be looked at as superhero, but, you know, I just thank God for this opportunity, you know? Yeah, so, but it's just good that young people, and this is Derrick Dan, Derrick's joint and Courtney James. It's good to just have young people thinking enough to say they want to help more of our young people start to read better, you know? Sometimes you look at reading, you may have been in the fifth grade, but you reading on the second grade level. It's good to get everyone up on the grade that they need to be in and to have these young men that I know and they have came from very humble beginnings. That was very key that they are doing this and, and spending money. I'm actually going to purchase several of these because I think these need to be everywhere. And any, any young person in our city, wherever they may be, if they want to do anything to help inform, to help other young people in our community to do better, I definitely want to be a support to them. So Unbound Comics, their first, uh, books, Blitz on the Rise, definitely go out and grab a copy. And I ask all the council people that buy a book from me, it's only $10, so let's make this happen. So, uh, and also it's, uh, Chief Clay, get ready to make his way up here to the front. You all know that, uh, we've been working on a very big announcement, uh, that's coming. And, uh, I want to be careful, city attorney, I need to be careful on how, well, I'm just going to hold. Just, just know that we are, we're about to get some very big news and I can't wait until I'm able to let the cat out of the. big news and I can't wait until I'm able to let the cat out of the bag. So I just said that. You know, doing this initiative with trying to get a new fire department, police department, Lad, Gary, ETC, them have already pretty much completed what they were gonna do in the fire department. And what we want to do is Chief Clay, just to go through and show and share with the public and the council on where we at.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
So what you have in front of you is, is a layout of fire station number one on Seventh Street. And if you look at the, the first page, that first page is the existing building that we have there. And the second page is the proposal that I proposed, but it's gonna make it impossible for the fire station number one to expand due to the dormitory where we wanted the dormitory at and were in proximity of Sixth Street. The distance between the dormitory and Sixth Street is like three to five feet, which make it impossible due to hazards. So if you go on to the third page, the third page where Chief Eila and I are proposing is a, of a three, third 300 square feet of apparatus bay and 2,500 square feet of private dormitory. This addition of the apparatus bay would give us the luxury of housing and running two additional fire trucks and an ambulance out that station. And the private dorms will offer privacy between the acting fire department and where they will be sleeping at. And with this layout, it would give us like 12 dorms. And also what it would offer us, it would, we would be able to expand the existing fire department that we have now, making, giving us two full bathrooms. And then also would give us storage, it would give us a new library and ready your room in the existing building. And also would give us a training facility in the new existing building. So when we take the dormitories out of the existing building to the north of the building, it would give all that space for us to expand and give us those much needed necessities that we need to operate. Also with this, we looking to reface the, the existing building, get a new face on the building and also get new overhead doors that's much needed. The doors that we have now, we, I mean, they, they breaking like every three months. And when they, I know six months ago, it took us like four months to get to replace that door, leaving that fire department open to elements, open to people coming in when the firemen are on calls. So with this expansion, I think it's, it's much needed. The guys would love it because it would be privacy, you know, with their dorms being north of the building, we get a much privacy from the other station. So is there any questions on that?
Well, I, I wanna ask, one of, one of the things, one of the best news I have got is that Lad feels that this will fit in the range that we gave him, correct?
That's correct, yes. It actually is gonna come in under the range that we propose, so. And they're, they're excited about it also. And this is just the first phase. As they continue to update the process of it, you will see this plan right here, you know, you will see other things comes along with it also.
I can, I can answer that for you.
Yeah. So, I mean, are we just getting a $1 lease for the next 99 years?
Well, no, actually, I'm in negotiation with you know who owns it that wants to sell it to us at a very mighty small fee.
I thought we had to do a dollar a year.
And that, that's why we was able to incorporate this, the dorms being on the north side of the building versus the west side. It was, it's just gonna be impossible for us to do it, so.
No. He's always been a fantastic individual, so hopefully he'll grant you your request.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
When they gonna start?
Ma'am?
When they gonna start, you know?
Hopefully, if everything approved, they send the first of next year, somewhere around the first of next year. And it should take like eight, eight months to finish.
Did any of the council person have to add anything? I just got one more thing before we go. We got one citizen request, Ms. Jerika Smith, did you get the information of how we gonna do that? Everything over here? Do we have the hard copies, anything? Okay. Oh, yeah, just, just come up and get her.
Hello. My apologies for the miscommunication on the document deadline. But I'm Jerika Smith, the owner of Mid-South Personal Care Agency. We're located at 1028 North Missouri Street, Suite 4. We send caregivers and PCAs to elderly and people with disabilities homes. And we help them with their daily living activities as far as dressing, grooming, bathing, and things in that nature. I want to merge a non-medical transportation business with the company that I have now. And we will take Medicaid and Medicare beneficiaries to and from the doctor and also to pick up prescriptions. What they'll have to do, they'll have to call the 1-800 broker line 24 hours prior. And we will send a van out to pick them up. It's no cost to them. It'll be covered under their insurance. According to Arkansas Department of Health, from June, from April to June of last year, there were 491 rides declined due to no provider being available. So that lets us know that there is a dire need for more non-medical transportation businesses in this area. I look forward to your support. Thank you.
And how our process is, you will give us all that information to you. Give me a hard copy, was emailing, make sure that every council person have it. And then in two weeks, you'll come back and then the councils decide if they'll grant you what you need. Tori, go ahead, you got the floor. Well, Councilman Crum, you got anything else to say?
Mr. Jordan.
Well, can I get a second? All of everybody, opposed? Mr. Jordan.